This meeting of the Lafayette City Council, today Thursday, May 8. Um, please rise to the platform, you can fly to the window and we will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the people of which stands on the nation. Indivisible, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Councilor Paulson?
Yes.
Councilor Burrows?
Here.
Councilor Cartel? Councilor Jordan?
Here.
Councilor Kay?
Here.
Councilor Mackey?
Here.
Mayor Mackey sent here.
Okay, this is a time of meeting that we, um, sorry, um, to citizen input on non-agenda items. This is the time, um, for citizens to, um, address council. And then anything, um, it's not a time to, as I said, it's clearly. That's the whole topic, but for council to be informed of information. Um, and then council can ask simple clarifying questions if needed. I just want to remind the council to not put staff on the spot, um, for answers. That's when we later on, um, and I will go down our list of people that have clients in. Um, so Roger Webb.
Great point, thank you.
Now I'll ask you to three minutes, please.
Yeah, of course. Where you all know about being able to speak. So Roger Webb, um, here as a private citizen, but also here speaking as a planning commissioner regarding the vote on the parks master plan last year. And, uh, but so, uh, we met in, uh, in Miami, this one by the way, by the way, we were building in Dayton, so that side of Lafayette. So, uh, we met and asked, wanted to discuss the parks master plan and with the motion, we had approved it. And Jim, our city planner, he initially thought, he's like, oh, you guys sure, you guys read everything thoroughly? That gave me some initial pause, because I didn't think we were done with the whole conversation. But I gather, you know, it's been going on and, you know, there's some momentum to get it done, I'm not gonna say that. So we'll drag it out forever, but, uh, good to know that we're getting close to the process. But there's one piece that I would like you guys to consider, particularly that's very far. So we, we covered comments park and, uh, dog park, that will be part. But the plan is, I understand, that the very part is a pedestrian park. And it came up some complications when the fence came in. I don't know if everybody, it was gonna be difficult to remove it after it went in. But it's during the, it's never designated as a motor park, and so that's how people use it for decades now. And as a pedestrian park, there's no sidewalk, it goes all the way there. So at least for one block there on Lafayette Highway Madison, and it's called right there at that stretch. But people have to go to the runway to get to the park. And then there's kind of nothing else there that you would pick and you're not going to. So everybody going there is gonna be bringing gear and potentially kids. And so they go from, say, the north side of town, across 99, dodging the road, you get the park. It just doesn't seem like a realistic access point. So I'd like to see the vehicular access put back into the plan. And I understand we're not funding things there, but, uh, I think that's not part of the plan. But I'd like to do that different part of the plan that we intend to open the park again. And then there was also some enthusiasm for a friends of Lafayette Park that I've summed up, so we didn't get into the plan. And I think there was some people that thought we could still volunteer there. And this came up, right, and it was a point of confusion, not putting a slide group there for the conversation. And, uh, you know, you mentioned that they can't mow there anymore, and, uh, I think that shocked some people. So we talked about having a volunteer group, and I think it's good to, like, put it as part of the plan and potentially, like, what kind of volunteer group is the city willing to work with? Do we want them to have insurance or do we want them to be allowed in every city? But if we're gonna have a volunteer group, we need to sort of define the parameters, how that would work. And I think that fits with the parks master plan. And, uh, yeah, then one last thing, my favorite Dune Way Trail project. So talking to Brandon Hammond at Public Works, and he's willing to put a trail camera up there and do some pedestrian counts. And that could help him get support for Grant. And he's the first person I've talked to in the whole office that said, we might have money for funding this. And that there's funds for roadside trail sidewalk kind of thing. So, uh, he agreed that we'd be bringing the city and send somebody to communicate. Excellent, thanks a lot.
Quick clarifying question. Uh, did the planning commission authorize you to come speak on behalf of the planning commission?
No, I am not speaking on the planning commission.
Okay, you usually use yourself as a.
Yeah, I voted no on it, and so I'm here today as the lone no vote to explain why I'm voting no.
Okay, so everything you're sharing is you as a private citizen and not as a planning commissioner?
It's for you, yeah. Well, I'm explaining my, as a planning commissioner, but I'm here as a citizen in public comment period.
Okay.
That's where Brandon felt it would be wrong with. So yes, I am not speaking for the planning commission, I'm speaking for myself and mine. I voted no on the public support.
Okay, and one more clarifying question. When you say public works in Gray, I mean, do you sure you're not talking to city public? We have public works today.
Yeah, no, no, I thought, because Brandon was, uh.
So what public works department are you referencing?
Yeah, public, public works. Because, uh, I noticed a vehicle counter up on Dune Way, and I asked Brandon for them. It was a city public works employee servicing it, and he said it was a part of a conversation in Little County.
Okay.
And so I asked him.
Okay, I was just clarifying who, what a public works team is, okay?
No, no, absolutely, I understand that. All right, excellent, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other public input before I close public input time? Okay, moving on. Um, additions or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's not more, it's not an addition or deletion, but, um, I do have somewhere to be tonight at 11:00 PM for my anniversary. So I'll check if council is okay with. I would like to depart at 9:45, um, if the meeting is still going on. And I'll obviously have Kennedy here, and I can always follow up with our last minute of the meeting, but I'm gonna need to assume if you are okay with.
Uh, I would like to delete section 13 of the agenda.
Want to end this one? Any, um.
We'll take it back.
Mm-hmm. I don't think that. Um, so I guess since it's, I just, I want to tell me clear how many people are okay with that. So that we, or that there's at least.
Yeah.
Needs four of us to delete it? So I, I didn't hear, um, clearly who was, that there was okay or not.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Okay?
I'm, I'm not, but. It's good I made it on record.
Okay. Do you clarify the time to stand, so you don't have to?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so we will, uh, strike number 13 from the, um, agenda. And then, uh, Brandon, I'll follow up with you on, um, the, what comes next from that.
Okay.
To possibly bring something to change meaning or whatnot, whatever needs to happen, I will. If the council okay with me, follow Brandon if there's any residual effect from that. And then share with you guys the process or any means. Yeah. Okay, um, so let's go ahead and cross off 13, which makes number 14, number 15. Okay, um, consent agenda. So I either need a, um, a motion to accept a consent agenda, or if anyone used to pull anything from the consent. If I just need a motion.
I move to approve the consent and join the ask presentation.
Consent.
Okay. Uh, any, or consent agenda, there's no discussion. Kennedy, can we call a roll vote? Okay, consent agenda passes. Moving on to number seven, public hearing, um, for building permit fee. The purpose of this, do I do, I do, you have to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I have the same target every week.
Yes. Okay, um, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive input on resolution 2025 dash 01. Updating building department permit rates and methodology as required by OAR chapter 918. And implementing a fee increase. Science, opening the public hearing. Are there any confluence of input on? Yes? Um, okay, so two confluence of interest, uh, staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So included in your packet, um, I had mentioned, uh, I think it was last month, the month before that, that we have to, um, do something before you regarding our building permit fee schedule. And do the implementation process with the state's permitting, um, um, training and whatnot. Uh, we have to establish a uniform methodology, and those are gonna be in exhibit A. Those mainly deal with, let me pull it up here so I don't convey it wrong. Um, so the state sets a methodology, sets a methodology such as the items that are charged per hour rate or per each. And that's something that, um, we cannot change that are charged differently. So those are gonna be in the new exhibits. And then also, I mentioned as part of the budget process, um, keeping up with the yearly increases to permit fees and plan reviews and inspection fees. Um, and that would be effective July 1, and this public hearing would discuss that, um, with the public. You know, um, we, we publish a notice with, with the state. And so that's kind of in front of, um, the council today and in front of public hearing. Um, the revisions must be approved, uh, by May 20, 2028. And, um, it's one of those state mandates where we're already part of the program, we're gonna have to approve it, um, more or less. Um, but the, at least the options on the fee schedule are going to be, uh, an option for you all. That, that is the goal, because I know when we had this discussion last year, when we came a part of the inventory program, we had to do some major increases that we didn't like doing, but that was part of the beginning of the state's program. And this will just kind of keep pace with the CPIU. I think the CPIU especially was 2.9, so we rounded it to 3.5 just to have it there. And then, uh, every year, we'll hopefully be able to bring this back, um, every July.
Okay, um.
To raise it every year?
Well, the goal would be to keep it at a CPIU and round it up till we have, you know, so we're not getting drastic changes. That's obviously up to the policymakers, but just so we can kind of keep pace to look what we're doing with the water rates and eventually the store rates. Um, the policy kind of do the business, but, um, that's obviously a policy discussion and a decision. Um, that's just staff recommendations.
So I have this, it says ask staff or important, it says ask for public testimony. I need public testimony. Um, and then it says questions of staff. Is that us asking you questions? Okay, uh, uh, Councilor Carson, are we asked a question that transitions into that? Um, any other questions? Okay, um, are there any council comments before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to clear up the public hearing. So now we are going to move on to action items, so A, A, which is the actual, um, resolution for the building permit fee. I will. Okay, um, so Councilor Paulson, he wants to go and have conflict. Um, Brandon, do we need another set, we don't need another separate report, right? Can you share that now with us two again?
No, you don't, I was just gonna show you into the B.
If you can, yes, go ahead.
You'll see, yeah, and you'll, you'll see the, like, um, total valuation, you'll see the effect of May, May 28. And then you'll see the, and so the one that made 28 is the one we've already, we've already been operating under, as, as I mentioned. So the new place would be reflective of the verse. So what here, what's here in 28 is the new methodology with the state, which just has a little bit of tinkering from last year. Um, and then the new rates for July 1st are gonna be on the right column. And you'll see like 350 on a total valuation of one to 500. Um, most of the fees, like the structural permit fees, those are already gonna be there as part of the state's, um, the state's cap. And then you have like the additional plan review. There's a minimum increase just to go up with inflation and to go up with the cost of doing business. So those are all gonna be listed there and per year review, hopefully had a chance to. If you guys had a question on the fee schedule or anything, do something else.
Yeah, um, any further council discussion? If not, um, I would be looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution 2025 dash 01, the building, the special, the effective dates of May 28 to 2025.
For Rebecca? Okay, I have on the table a motion through a new resolution 2005 dash 01 for the new building permit fee schedule with effective dates of May 28, 2005 for revisions and July 1, 2025 for fee increases. Any further deliberation? Okay, uh, Kennedy, can you please call a roll?
Councilor Mackey?
Hi.
Councilor Carson?
Hi.
Councilor Jordan? Councilor Kay? Um, Councilor Paulson? Councilor Burrows?
Hi.
Okay, no passing. Resolution has passed. Okay, moving on to, uh, number nine, discussion community outreach grant. Um, Brandon, I will give this to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so at our last budget committee meeting on April 28, 2025, um, a pretty thorough discussion got involved regarding the directives and the code of record in general regarding the community outreach grant. At that time, I mentioned that the budget, I mean, that policy wasn't their direction. The direction was recommending a budget to you all at city council. And, um, so I just wanted to have you all discuss that today and provide staff some direction. Um, the budget committee did recommend $0 to be given out, uh, for grants this year. And so, uh, we won't be able to fund the grants this year if council approved that next month in June. Um, we still have a program in that, in act. Um, and if the council so chooses to rip themselves of that program, we would do something similar to what we did with the downtown, um, the downtown. We've some committee about a little something where the council wanted to, um, cease the committee. And we would come up with a resolution ceasing that if that's what council so chooses to do. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, so, uh, this is council discussion. Um, so is there any discussion on this? We know that we're gonna have to decide one way or another. And we're coming up to, is that if it's, if nothing is changed before, um, July, we will need to still jump those peeps unfunded. Correct? Because it's, uh.
Yeah, and so, and so the, so the application that came in with, with, pretty much we told that the program is ceased. I mean, I wasn't giving a call, and anybody told them that we don't have funds this year. But.
So right now, it's, we've got the program, but there's no funding.
Correct. So then I would continue, so if there's no dollars this year and council cho- chose not to do anything, we would keep the program open. And you can keep funding at zero, or budgeting at zero and just keep it here. Or if it's something where you feel as policymakers, you don't wanna no longer do this program, we would just bring a resolution. And then actually the council meeting ceasing that program. Let me just, we just need direction on how the council wants to go. Or we can wait for another time, and it's honestly completely up to you.
I'll just reiterate what I said at the budget committee meeting, I just don't think it's our place to delegate taxpayer money to our chosen guy. People don't need to do the same, so I think they're welcome to do it, but I don't think they need to choose other dollars, so.
Okay, and I, if I see this right, the title of the line item is community outreach slash promotions. Yeah, just as I hand off grants, but that's where the grant program.
Okay.
I'll just reiterate what I said, too. I don't wish you to permit it.
Thanks.
But that's essentially. It, there's other places that say grants, but this is not.
I think it's because it's not, it's not only the grants that come out of that.
So it's a community outreach too.
Alright, I was like, should I?
No, the grants are not going on, they're gonna be grants that we're spending that we're receiving from the heads of the state. That grant program is the only one that's suspended by the city, and it's not a good initiation budget.
I guess, I guess to clarify a question of that line item, let's say it was originally 3,000. That was solely for this grant program is the only thing?
Yes.
But at other times, could there be something else on that line item?
There could be, but my mind there has only been.
Okay, so that's why they're the same for you, okay?
So it's moved to two grants, that line item is moved to two grants.
That's actually my mind there, it totally been under that, I guess, okay.
So I, I don't know, yeah, I will then still be for them.
What does that mean, continue to type line items ceases?
I'm sorry?
Is the implementation timeline feasible and ceases at the end of the point?
Yeah, i- if you say I don't wanna do it, it discounts, because we don't wanna do it, and our council in three years want to do it. We would, we would, you know. But I, I think at that time, similar to the downtown program, we would probably look at the scope of the grant. And say, hey, what was the issue last time with council? How do we wanna make it successful this time with council? And probably try to reach out to program.
Where did we decide to re-provide?
We, uh, back to the general, um, just first, it's just, yeah, that's. Um, okay, so our choices are, or the directive that we need to, um, if Brandon is keep the grant program, it's just not funded this year. Or completely cancel the grant program.
My position is.
Cancel, sorry.
My position is I think it should be canceled as, um, uh, Ms. Harper had explained the purpose of this program created by the council years ago. It's not certain that purpose anymore. And so if a purpose comes up where the council, either this council or future councils, want to consider that or explore that, we can always do it. Um, but the fact for me that the purpose of this is not being accomplished anymore, I don't see the reason to have it.
Not having one that saves us money in the future too. I can see it being used every year if we have it.
Well, I'd like to say, understanding now from the title that it is just grants. I don't have a problem with it going away.
So, um, I guess we need to bring back, um, the steps we need to take to dissolve the grant program?
Resolution?
Yeah, a resol- right, because it was a resolution that created, so we need a resolution to dissolve it. Um, my suggestion is sooner the better so that we can officially, I mean, we're gonna have to let the, the applicant know anyway that it's not funded, but it'd be easier just to tell them that the program's been canceled. I just want to. So, okay, is that enough to grant it from us? Okay. Okay, um, so we get that, we're on to department report. So Brandon, I'm gonna hand over section 10 completely to you, this is what I.
Okay, unless there's any questions, but the staff report provided to you, I'll go into Madam Nuts, if everybody's okay with.
Yep.
Um, it was brought to our attention from a member of the, um, disabled area regarding the crosswalk at 7th and Jackson. Um, I called the engineer, um, and, um, Greg, and it looks like, um, over the years, there was a question about when they put that crosswalk on Jackson, there should have been, uh, like an ADA complaint, and there's not one there. And there should have been one there. Um, and now it's on my radar, I have to address it because I'm looking at, only liability. Um, it'll probably be about 7 to 10,000 dollars. And, um, Gordon mentioned, uh, and so then I already, so I, I recommended him draw something up for a change order that I can approve when they're here for registration, so we can get that done. Um, especially now that's not purview, uh, we have to address it. So I'll be doing that.
Okay.
Did that pass the inspection? Was it, was there inspection on it?
Yeah, I can't believe that.
I'm not letting you use, I'm, I'm kind of a chance, I don't know the world, but.
Nonetheless, thank you, Brandon.
Yeah.
Thank, and thank you for letting us know that that's going on so that we hear something in the community we're not all off guard going, well. Correct?
Can I make a correction on that? Okay, I think it was, uh, 10,000 for one side, probably closer to 20 to do both of those ADA complaint.
Okay, and then that would be a lot of them, yes. I think it's like, I thought it was 10 for, just they did that one side, because if we're not gonna do the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, it looked like it when I reread it, I think Gordon, yeah, it was the 20, 10 each side.
It's a lot of money, but they gave them lots of, you know. Yeah, and so if it goes over your discretionary, Brandon, obviously.
We can gain that.
Okay.
Um, just a reminder, June's meeting, uh, it will be the day before, it'll be on Wednesday. Since that will be in New York, we all about five, six months ago approved the earlier council meeting. Um, also, that time we'll have our June budget approval for hearing, so, um, be prepared for that. Um, also thank you, uh, Kennedy, for providing dinner, um, and lunch to pass two sessions. Also, um, tomorrow, uh, there's a big day for Council Burrows and Greg. Um, as you all know, uh, I've been at the Capitol the past few weeks, um, doing my best to get this grant for the pump station at Canaan. And unfortunately, uh, the hearing at the last minute coincided with my anniversary plans. So, um, luckily I did a lot of great work, but I also know, um, the state led, some committees love to hear from electives. And thank, um, Council Burrows was available at the time. And then I also had Greg going as the department leader, um, to talk about the why it's needed for the department, so we'll be there today. Um, and then lastly, um, if there's ever any inkling that something's gonna be pulled from an agenda, I don't wanna be embarrassed like that ever again. Uh, I was, I, I all respect you, and I respect the same thing. I was caught off guard, and that puts down on me. So if there's any, when anything going on, please next time let me know, because we just wasted money that they, you know, we just wasted money for a second session. So that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Councilor Burrows, Councilor Paulson? Councilor Jordan? Any more? Okay, Councilor Carson?
Uh, I had to review last night's board meeting for the, um, McMenville School Board, and then I'll have some next time.
Um, do you have any, even, uh, recently, the biggest thing? Are you just gonna wait until you're? Okay. Okay, um, Councilor Burrows?
Um, next Tuesday is, uh, Farm Board meeting.
Okay, uh, Councilor Kay? Okay, Councilor Mackey?
Hi.
Okay, uh, Mayor's report, um, yes, thank you, uh, Councilor Burrows for, uh, going with Greg tomorrow. Unfortunately, I couldn't take all the work with the time notice, but I really appreciate you going. Um, I would like to just quote out there that August meeting, I will either be zooming it or not be able to be there at all. Um, it'll be my, my anniversary for you, which we're actually, we're working as a way of indicators conquer, depending on where you have conception. But I just wanted to add that, because I know that, um, having a quorum under the seat of us, a quorum is important. Um, so, but also, uh, just remember, as we're all going into summer months, to look at your schedules and share sooner than later if you do have conflicts. Um, I will be bringing forward to you guys next month, there are a couple of members of the budget committee that have hit that threshold of missing the last three meetings. Um, and the way that, uh, the code of record is written is that it is time, would be time for me to bring forth to you guys, um, removal. Um, I, but I would like to know if there's any specific thing you guys would like me to do to reach out specifically to them prior to that? Uh, if there's, you know, um. Which I, I have, or I mean, I can continue, but I know that the only other time event where we've done something like this was planning commission, which is a different, um, that that is actually written into the charter for a public hearing. And we sent a certified letter, right? Is that correct, Brandon? But I just wanted to make sure that if that was something in order for you guys to feel comfortable, that I know now so that we can, um, move forward. I appreciate the board members, uh, or committee members, but I don't wanna deal with any kind of, um, not having a quorum. And if there's other citizens that would like to fill those roles. So, you know, I will continue to reach out to them in every aspect that I am able to, to.
Is there any communication at all?
Yes, uh, um, with one I have, they've shared that they've been busy with their work. Um, the other one, I have even gone knocking to their door, you know? And I've emailed for them. And trying to call. Um, and the one that I went knocking to their phone is not the current phone number. So maybe I'll just do a, a letter in the mail, and I'll, that's certified. Okay, um, we are making progress with, um, the plan of the. Okay, um, we are making progress with, um, the plant, the, the library itself for the summer. While Brandon, um, continues to work from the city's side for a long-term, um, relationship with the library program through the summer. I am in the meantime, um, for this summer's program, working with their volunteer coordinator. Um, I'm gonna push out a, um, initiative to see if there's some, Lafayette people willing to help volunteer for that program. Um, I went to the L O C conference, and just real quick, some of the highlights from it was I went to a workshop on code enforcement on the budget. And it was actually interesting to hear some suggestions, um, some tips, um, I think I said the box, I'm planning to share that with Brandon, um. Successfully, I went to one on funding infrastructure and all the information they gave us, I was able to sit there, go, oh, we've been doing that, we've been doing that, we've been reaching that, we've been reaching that. And then the last one, which was really interesting, was just the poker's buy-in, like how to get buy-in for upcoming lettings or bonds or things like that, so. Um, other than that, I am looking for a motion.
Ask a question before.
I just have, uh, the information on, on the A V report, when spenders' school C E T payment, what, what does C E T stand for?
The, the con- construction excise tax, it's similar to N S D C. Um, anytime somebody builds, there's a certain amount of money that goes towards, um, the school district per house built. So we collect it and it gets, get it, I think it's like twice a year or something that we pay out, but I don't know.
What is it?
Yeah, no, hold your app, I know it's a good time, so you're gonna send us in voice, and then we send them out check.
I just noticed it was a little bit, I, ooh, that's split.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
You need to adjourn?
I'll say it.
And I'm gonna take roll call, determine if all in favor?